Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the October seventh, twenty twenty five Planning Commission meeting for the city of Stonecrest. We ask that this time if you would please silence your phones as we're about to begin the meeting. Uh, for some of you all who don't know, the Planning Commission is the recommending body to the city council for applications they wish to come into the city of Stonecrest. Those applicants could be the residents for change in zoning or a business as relation the change in designation. Applicants will come forth uh before the Planning Commission and present his or her case. Each applicant is given ten minutes to present why their case should be approved. Also, opposition, those people wishing to speak in opposition of an application, they will have ten minutes to state the facts and evidence on why the applicant should be denied. A lot of times you have a large group of people who may be opposing an application, and we always suggest that you have a spokesperson since there's only ten minutes for a person to present his or her case. The applicant will have time for rebuttal uh after the opposition speaks to address issues and concerns that have been brought up during the presentation. The members of the planning department, the director or the deputy director, will come forth and they will let you know the items that are on the agenda and through the presentation on the city's behalf. And afterwards, the applicant will be come forth. Anyone wishing to speak, when you come to the mic, please give your name and your address so it can be properly recorded for our records. Members of the Planning Commission who can ask questions of the staff, the applicant, or any opposition person present. We, I'm sorry, uh, once the uh public hearing has closed on the matter, uh, no other questions can be presented and only the commission will be asking questions of participants. At this time, I'm going to call to order. Commission District one, Commissioner Erica Williams.
Present.
Commission District two, Joyce Walker.
Present.
Commission District four, Pearl Hollis. Commission District five, Lemuel Hawkins. And Commission District three, Chair Eric Hubbard, present. So let the record reflect, there are four commissioners present, so we do have enough to proceed forward because it exceeds the quorum. Uh, this time, the floor is open if I can get a motion that we approve the agenda for tonight.
Make a motion to approve the agenda dated October the seventh, twenty twenty five.
Is there a second?
I second that motion.
All right, it's been a motion for approval of the agenda by Commissioner Williams, seconded by Commissioner Walker. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Let the record reflect unanimous approval for the agenda for tonight, October seventh, twenty twenty five. At this time, the floor is open if we can have approval of the many minutes from the July first, twenty twenty five commission, commission meeting. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the planning commission meeting minutes dated July first, twenty twenty five.
Is there a second?
I second that motion.
Motion being given by Commissioner Williams, properly seconded by Commissioner Walker. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record reflect that it's unanimous approval of the minute meetings dated July first, twenty twenty five. At this time, the floor is open for any announcements from the planning department.
There are no announcements, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. The director, being no, no announcements, and there's any old business we need to address, no old business to be addressed. At this time, we would like to ask the planning department to come forth for new business uh with the uh first hearing application. Deputy Director.
Good evening, uh, planning commissioners. Uh, the first item is um a request for rezoning for three seventy-four um Cove Lake Road. Uh, the applicant has requested a deferral and the applicant is here will allow them to make that formal request.
All right, thank you, Deputy Director. The applicant can come forth.
Good evening, Michelle Battle with Battle Law, thirty-five sixty-two Haversham at Northlake, Tucker, Georgia, three zero zero eight four. And we have been working with the Cove Lake Homeowners Association. We had a very good meeting a couple of weeks ago. Um, and there were a number of things that they asked for us um to review, and we are in the process of completing that. We've got some of it, um, but we wanted to get all of it before we turned it over to them. I did reach out to Ms. Green um with the HOA and um informed her of that, and she indicated that they understood and that they did want the totality of the information that they requested from us. Additionally, there was some information that the planning staff requested as well, and so we are trying um to put those documents together. Um, and so with that, we think in fact that it might make more sense for us to defer um to the December um calendar as opposed to the November so that we have sufficient time. Uh, we don't want to keep coming back and asking for more time.
Yeah.
Um, so we feel like that would give us sufficient time to gather all the documentation, including one of the things they asked for was a um a traffic light warrant study. Um, and so that's one of the things that we are also working on as well, so.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you, counselor. So you're asking for a deferral on this item and on the next item as well until the December calendar. Okay, I'm gonna, since it was advertised, I do have to open up the floor for public hearing on the item. This, no? All right, okay, being that we don't have to do that, uh, the floor is... Okay, in here, okay. All right, is there a, Commissioner, is there a, a motion for, to accept a deferral? Or is there a motion that we have a deferral on this item?
Make a motion to defer item RZ two-five dash zero zero four until the December, December second, twenty twenty five Planning Commission meeting.
All right, there's a motion on the floor for a deferral to December twenty-second, twenty twenty five. Is there a second?
December second, December second.
December second, twenty twenty five. Is there a second for the motion from Commissioner Williams? All right, this has been properly seconded by Commissioner Walker. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Let the record reflect unanimous uh motion for recommendation of deferral on this item till December second, twenty twenty five. Thank you, commissioners. Deputy Director.
Good evening again. Okay. Okay, this is a request, excuse me, one second. The request is for RZ twenty-five zero zero nine. The address is six-three-seven-zero Woodrow Road. Uh, Adolphus Armstrong, the applicant, New Birth Missionary Baptist Church. Request is to rezone and a map, for a rezoning and map amendment for parcel from R one hundred to from R one hundred to MU three, MU three, mixed use, medium density for the purpose of a mixed use development. Little background on the property, the city of Stonecrest zoning map showed the property is currently zone R one hundred. It was on R one hundred around two thousand four, somewhere between two thousand four and two thousand six uh before the city of Stonecrest was incorporated. The applicant surveys show there's no wetlands on the property, and the request is to rezone parcel sixteen, one oh six, zero one, zero one five, uh known as six-three-seventy Woodrow Road from R one hundred, medium lot two. Uh, makes MU, mixed use, medium density uh for the purpose of residential and commercial development. Uh, on the public participation, a um notice was sent out to properties within a thousand feet of the subject property in August. There was a CPIM meeting, uh, public, uh, community planning information meeting held on September the eleventh at six o'clock here at six, at City Hall.
Okay.
And there were fourteen uh participants spoke at the meeting, and some of the concerns uh and questions were in reference to funding, uh, property maintenance, uh, safety and safety of residents, ownership, amenities, and services provided to the residents. This is a location of the subject property where the star is located, just south of I twenty, near Lithonia Industrial and I twenty, just east of um a New Birth uh Missionary Baptist Church. The future land use has the property as institutional, public. The current zoning is R one hundred, medium lot. The property is in the overlay, uh, Stonecrest Overlay District tier four. This is another area of the property. It's heavily wooded and vacant. This is the submitted site plan of the, of the proposed development. Uh, it includes um urban, urban neighborhood uh homes, uh, small lot homes. There are um office, there's mixed use, uh, there's townhomes, there's uh multifamily and live-work um units on the property proposed. These are some uh proposed building elevations of some of the small lot um urban neighborhoods. This is uh current site photos. The property is vacant and wooded. And staff recommendation. Uh, developers shall conduct a noise, decibel, and acoustic analysis uh test to ensure that the amplified sounds are mitigated uh to a acceptable level so as not to uh cause unreasonable disturbance to the neighboring residential community. Uh, establish maximum decibel level uh at the property boundaries. The developer shall uh maintain a undisturbed buffer between the proposed development and the adjacent community along the, the length of the property to help with mitigating the sound from the proposed development, outdoor uh buildout, and the amphitheater, and limit the intensity of uh the scale uses closest to the development, uh, residential development. Uh, development community, excuse me. Development shall submit a lighting plan uh to show there's uh, there would not be excessive outdoor lighting or pre-outdoor, uh, create um light pollution. And a construction mitigation plan shall be submitted to uh and approved by the Community Development Division Director, um, including limits of construction hours, dust control measures, and uh truck route, truck, truck routing to minimize neighborhood disruptions. Staff recommend approval with those conditions.
Thank you, Deputy Director. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the Deputy Director?
Can you go?
Commissioner Hawkins, I'm sorry.
Thank you, um, Mr. Chair. I just have a quick one. I see this elevations for the, for the home, so they look to be small. Some, and some of this is the, the new design trend of the, of the small home units. Um, are there elevations or were there elevations um submitted for any of this, uh, any of the mixed use, the commercial?
No, sir. Um, and I'll, that's a better question for the applicant, but I, what I can tell you is um from speaking with the applicants, uh, having numerous meetings, they were more concerned about phase one, and these are the proposed buildings for phase one. Uh, they'll, they'll come back for phase two, not necessarily for planning purposes, but for development purposes, they're, they're more concentrated on phase one.
And that leads me to my second question. Um, how many phases? Is it just the two phases, commercial and in, um, and commercial? I mean, residential and commercial?
Yes, uh, from, from speaking with the applicant, that's, that's what they indicated, yes.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Williams.
Thank you so much, Chairman Hubbard. Um, looking at the site plan, do you mind going back to the site plan for me, please? I know that's small, but (laugh) how many entrances are there to this site plan?
I am showing... Um, I'm showing three that I'm showing right off. Four, I'm sorry, I think it's four.
Four. And the line on the end to your, to your right, are those all homes? And then in the middle, are those double homes that are going to be side by side?
Uh, which, which color?
The green.
So, yes, each one of those are going to be homes.
That's tight, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners with questions for the Deputy Director?
No, my only question, I guess, would be direct, uh, directed to the, uh, the client because um just concerning uh why they would only be concerned about the first phase. Because I was in that meeting when they had, uh, when they first had it.
Okay, all right. Well, if that being that there are no questions for the Deputy Director, the floor is open for a motion to open public hearing on RZ twenty-five dash zero zero nine. Is there a motion to open public hearing on this item?
Make a motion to open public hearing on case RZ two-five dash zero zero nine.
Is there a second on the motion?
I second that motion.
Motion being given by Commissioner Williams, seconded by Commissioner Walker. All in favor for opening public hearing for RZ two-five dash zero zero nine, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Let the record reflect unanimous approval to open the public hearing for RZ twenty-five dash zero zero nine. And at this time, we're going to ask the applicant if he or she would come forth to present their case, their presentation. Give your name and your address.
Good evening to the commission and the um greater um Stonecrest community stakeholders.
Good evening.
Okay, my name is Adolphus Armstrong, and I am at um thirty-six forty-nine Donovan Court in Decatur, Georgia, right off of Wesley Chapel and Boring Road. And again, my name is Adolphus Armstrong. I have the honor to serve as the Chief Financial Officer at New Birth Missionary Baptist Church under the leadership of Reverend Dr. Jamal Bryant. I started working at New Birth in two thousand, two thousand and seven, and the interesting thing, each morning as I turned off of Evans Mill onto Woodrow Road, I noticed that the parcel that we're discussing now had been cleared. The entire thirty-five acres had been cleared back then. Um, Bishop Eddie O'Long had the envision of creating a senior housing development on those thirty-five acres. But then, in two thousand eight, the housing crisis not only wiped out hundreds of millions of dollars in black household wealth, it also slammed the brakes on the potential of Bishop Long's dream of a senior housing development. In two thousand six, the church coordinated with DeKalb County through eminent domain, dedicating five acres to the Lithonia Industrial Boulevard Extension Project. Due to the church's advocacy and the, the New Birth advocacy, uh, the Lithonia Industrial Boulevard now extends to Woodrow Road. We are here today to affirm that a dream deferred is not a dream denied. We've had the benefit of not only having one visionary leader, but two. Picking up the torch from Bishop Long, Dr. Bryant has reimagined and recast the dream of a senior housing as a mixed use development that now will meet the needs of the, uh, if growing needs of the Stonecrest mu, community. That vision is New Birth Village. That's a just for a second. Okay. The project has two sponsors. The first is New Birth Missionary Baptist Church. The church serves as the um faith-anchored community that adds the attainable housing, neighborhood mixed use, retail, green infrastructure, workforce development to celebrate, to accelerate Stonecrest's economic mobility and quality of life. The project transforms unutilized land into a resilient, walkable district that creates jobs, grows the tax base, and develops concrete public benefits from day one. Again, the two sponsors are New Birth Missionary Baptist Church and New Birth Community Development Corporation. The church, under the spiritual leadership of Reverend Dr. Jamal Harrison Bryant and the committee chair, Mr. Leighton Hall, serves as the anchor institution providing land, vision, faith-based leadership for the project. Project management is further strengthened by Elder Maurice Wardell, the church's chief operating officer, and me. We bring operational and financial expertise to the development. Our second sponsor is New Birth Community Development Corporation chaired by Dr. Michael V. Roberts. The CDC is the nonprofit arm dedicated to advancing community development, affordable housing, and economic empowerment through the New Birth Village Initiative. Our development team has been uh created or brought together by our two sponsors, and in my opinion, again, it's a superior development team led by Dr. Vanessa Williams Nash, managing partner of the Williams Nash Agency, supported by a team of experienced professionals, including the following. Tyrone Williams, engineer and project manager, Jabari Herbert, licensed general contractor and project manager, Antonio Samples, Everly and Associates Civil Site Design Engineers, Adam Williamson, TSW Lead Residential Home Design Architect, Techie Holmes, Housing Innovation and Construction, HCO Architects Lead Design Architect for our Phase Two Senior Housing Development, and McCormick Baron Salazar, and that, they're, they are a national developer in mixed use and affordable housing. At this time, I would like to introduce Dr. Vanessa Williams Nash, who will provide some details about the um actual rezoning that we'll have in this afternoon.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Due to the fact that I did hear you say we had ten minutes, I'm going to say hello. But I would like to bring our colleague, um, Mr. Tyrone Williams, who's our engineer, to come forward to explain and address some of the questions that I heard you bring up.
Thank you.
So, again, my name is Tyrone Williams. I'm the, I'm project engineer, uh, the project, project manager. The design engineer is Everly uh Associates. So the question was, why is the focus on phase one versus phase two? The primary focus that we've been looking at is the residential piece. Uh, the project for phase two requires detention and other things that will be for phase one. The detention is on, in the phase two site, so we will do the roadway clearing, but we will not do any of the construction. That will be deferred to our partner, which is McCormick, uh, Salazar, and Baron, uh, to do that. We saw it as more critical to focus on the residential piece to actually provide relief in that area. I think there was a second question, but I don't quite remember what that second question was.
I think Commissioner.
So we're going in the phase, let's choose the dress.
Okay.
Commissioner Williams, Commissioner Hawkins.
Yeah, I, I didn't see uh any elevations for the uh proposed commercial or the, or the mixed use section. I mean, even though mixed use is residential plus.
Yeah, we actually have done renderings for that concept. Uh, we have a community pavilion. We have um twenty-five thousand square feet of uh commercial mixed use, and the townhomes will look very similar to the um, to the single families, except for they'll be more detached. So, um, I don't know if we have, is, is that in here? Okay, uh, we, we have a couple of renderings that kind of show this, and um... There we go, right there. You can see off to the left, I guess over here better. You can see off to the, to the right side is what we envisioned for the commercial. The live-work and the townhome properties will look very similar. Um, the lower floor on the live-work would be a studio or whatever, and then you'd have upstairs, upstairs living. I'm not sure if you're familiar with um the development off of Bill Kennedy downtown, uh, the Kroger there off of I twenty. If you've seen that kind of neighborhood, you know how they have ice cream shops and, you know, all sorts of plant shops and little restaurants and stuff on that lower low. That's what we envisioned.
Yeah, I'm very familiar. What, what's the uh, what's expected, the construction timeframe? So, say, in, in, in the perfect world, we build out phase one. What's the anticipated uh start of construction for phase two, or will it be simultaneous?
Well, I'm going to speak optimistically.
Hmm.
Um, we have a hundred and one lots in phase one. Uh, based on the pre-sales that we anticipate, um, we expect that we'll probably pre-sell fifty percent of the lots um almost at ground, at breaking ground. Uh, if that holds true, we're probably looking at about fourteen months on the phase one. We will then program phase two. Currently, we are doing a new marketing analysis to determine what that would look like, because originally the market analysis was done three years ago. We're in different economic times right now, so we're actually going to measure that based upon the receptivity to the community in terms of absorption rate. If the absorption rate picks up, we have another two hundred or so doors that are in phase two, combination of multifamily and then the senior living. So we're going to play it by ear. Total, though, we could envision this project being built out in three years. I think it's one and phase two.
I have a quick question.
Commissioner Walker?
Yeah, I just want to ask quick, quickly, what kind of uh, uh, how much of these are going to cost? What's the starting point?
So, um, there was a question about the size, so um, the smallest unit is approximately seven hundred square feet. We go up to twelve hundred square feet. Um, you see the floor plans, they are spacious. These are like nine-foot, ten-foot ceilings, so you do not have a sense that you're in a small place. It's very well laid out, very well appointed. Most of the units will be two and three bedrooms, two baths, one in half bath. Um, we have, we've requested a variance for some singles, like one bedroom, one bath, because we're one of the underserved communities. underserved communities is singles, both in startup for young as well as seniors. So, the price range will run from low two hundreds to, I'd say, maybe three at max, but, uh, that's what we're trying to stay, stay down. And that'll be all about market. One of the things we're looking for is to do, provide subsidized, um, home purchases. So, we've got some innovative things that we're looking to try to bring twenty to forty thousand dollars, you know, to assist first-time buyers to get into the house. So, if we do it that way, you're probably looking at about a hundred and eighty with the subsidized purchase.
Okay. Commissioners, any other questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing that there are none, is there anything further you all would like to present, or do you have any other persons that want to speak in support of the application? Doctor?
Good evening again. Just to bring clarity, thank you for the extra moments you're giving us, um, as it relates to the pricing of the homes. As you know, construction costs are going up exorbitantly at this time. So, one of the things that we've done, we've been very proactive about, um, Dr. Bryant has also made sure, and, and, and his team with New Birth, that we look at alternative funding. A lot of that alternative funding is coming through grants, um, national applications that we've done, also HUD and home programs, utilizing some of those initiatives, as well as the privatization of banking institutions, um, looking at partners such as, we've already had several partners come to the table, Bank of America, Wells Fargo Bank, and others. Um, our own citizens' trusts have said, how can you utilize, um, affordable housing money that's available through Federal Home Loan Bank? All of these programs that are national programs that are out there, we'll be utilizing those programs to actually buy down the cost of the home so that we can reach the currently underserved. As you all know, I'm, I'm a mom of a, of a college graduate who cannot afford a home right now, even though they're gainfully employed because of the overpricing of homes. So, we're looking at the fact of how can we, um, really adjust, not just to address the senior housing issue for those that are now beginning to go down in their home sizes, but also looking at those, of those young people who are out there who want to purchase their first home and may not have the affordability. So, we really, when we say mixed use, when we say community, we really mean that come in unity, coming together within our organization and what we're developing. We just recently, and I wanted to share this with the commission because I thought it was important, because I see a lot of those citizens in the audience today. We also had a tour with the citizens here, um, where we took them to another tiny home in, in master plan community so they could see exactly what it looks like, and they can get a feeling of that. So, um, I would just like to share that with you all, that we really want to work hand-in-hand with the city and with the community itself. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Anyone else want to speak in support of the applicant?
Mr. Chair?
We have two people.
Mr. Chair?
You want to go first. I'm sorry, ma'am director.
Mr. Chair, can you hear me?
Okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
Faye Colfield. I live at three-two-six. Oh, shoot. I thought everybody could hear me. Okay, I'm Faye Colfield. I live at three-two-six-one Chaparral Way in the Chaparral subdivision. We are one of the closest single, one of the closer single-family residential areas to New Birth. And I would like to say this first of all, you should demand that every person that wants to build more than five houses or build on more than five acres come as New Birth has come today. They have brought with them the information on financing. They've brought who's going to build it. They've brought, uh, the designs of the houses. They brought what all they envisioned to happen. They didn't go down to Home Depot or Lowe's and snatch some standardized, some standardized pictures. They just brought, they brought that, and they brought the people. They also took us on a tour of their area, okay? So, I, I don't have any problem. And, you know, usually, I'm against everything to come in here, because we are, we don't get nothing but trash. Really, honestly, when, when you go look and see what's being built, you see how many pieces of land have been stripped down, and there's nothing there, well, you understand why we, why I oppose stuff and why a lot of people oppose stuff. New Birth is in this community. They are a church. They are not going to be able to pick that church up and disappear anywhere, okay? Uh, this would be a perfect fit for this neighborhood. I saw the little homes they built. It's not for me, okay, because I don't like being, or I don't like living that close, uh, living that close to someone. But here is what I would say. For the homes that we went in, these are young people. They are young professionals. They, they are well-maintained homes, because we actually went in homes that people were living in, and they are well-maintained. So, there are people who want to buy that. Uh, also, there were some other things they did that were really, you know, really, really good. The other thing I want to say is that what my concern is, is not so much New Birth, it's the people next door, okay? I want you to rezone all of New Birth's property. All of this thing, I want it zoned so this can be built there. But I also want you to take a look at the property next door, because we've had problem out of those people. We've had a lot of problems out of them. And what I don't want them to do is to be able to build trash next to this piece of property. So, you know, I, I, I'm in favor of it. I say the only thing is that it all has to be rezoned at the same time, and that it be adhered to for this project, that they can't do anything else with it but be in guidelines of what's there, because we know where to find them. That's the most important thing. We know where to find, uh, 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 Dr. Bryant. We know how to find everyone, and in fact, uh, myself and Mrs., Mrs. Nash, we were actually a couple of years ago on one of those international tours, so I know where to find her. But I'm just saying, not trying to be funny, I'm saying that zone everything at one time, and then start looking at the property next door so that we don't have a problem out of them demeaning this property.
All right, thank you, and thank you. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to extend the time. I know we've gone over a few minutes, but I'd like to make a motion, Commissioner, we extend the time for the applicant in opposition by eight minutes. Is there a second?
I second the, uh, proposed time extension for both the, uh, those in favor and those against.
Thank you. Yeah, we have a, a motion on the floor for extension of eight minutes for the opposition and for the applicant. It's been properly seconded. All in favor, vote by saying aye? Aye? Any opposed? Let the record reflect that it's unanimous that we extend time for eight minutes for the applicant and the opposition. Okay, there, I believe Dave Marcus was standing in support.
Like Faye, I hate to ruin my reputation. I'm David Marcus, sixty-five oh one Rockland Road, not too far from this development.
Okay.
Um, the first thing I want to say is that for a development to be allowed in Stonecrest when it asks for something that it does not by right have, but asks for permission to... There should be three things. It should be the right development, in the right place, with a developer we trust. This is the right development. If you just looked at the elevations and think about the people coming off, um, the highway on Lithonia Industrial, that brings Stonecrest into the twenty-first century, which we badly need. We're sick of all these look-alike townhomes.
No.
Number one. Number two, the price point, low two hundreds. This is not, quote, affordable housing, but this is, this is housing that more people can afford, and we need that. They are small. They are tidy. They are beautiful. I, too, was on the bus tour with Ms. Colfield, and Carmicia Smith was there, uh, joining us to, to look at it, and we were, everybody on that bus was impressed by the quality of the build, the quality of the appointments within the properties, the thoughtfulness of the developer inciting them. And this was even denser than New Birth is asking for. I really like the look. What else are we going to have there? Right now, that's part of the Stonecrest Overlay District, which allows a lot, a whole lot on that piece of property, a whole lot of commercial, a whole lot of maybe light industrial, maybe not. Um, but they're basically eliminating it and saying, this is going to be a primarily residential, mixed-use community. And I understand not with an arena, which I believe I heard somebody on the bus, one of these people say was a bad word, but a community pavilion in the center. As I said, I spent, I spent the time. We had an, you know, an hour bus to Union City and an hour back, at least that's what it seemed like, a couple of hours touring. And I will say, I trust the developers. I trust the people sitting in this front row. I trust the person who's doing the construction that we met very much. Right place. You're blocking out a lot of potential commercial trash. You're blocking out chicken joints on Woodrow, Woodrow in Lithonia. Uh, you're putting in quality homes. Right place, right development, right developer. And I want to say, I am strongly, strongly in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marcus. Is there anyone else? You, Ms. Kell, can you give your name and your address?
Good evening. My name is Renee Kell. I live at five-seven-four-one Fieldstone Drive, Stonecrest, Georgia. I, as Faye and Dave have said, the project looks really, really, looks to be exciting and something really great for the area. Usually, my concerns are more from the environmental side. Somebody already asked what, how long will this project take? How long is the construction of this project? My question is, how long will it take, and what is the impact of this project on the residents who live around? We talked about buffers. Buffers are cool, but they don't stop the pollution. They don't stop the dust. They don't stop the noise. What is going to happen to the people that live in the area? Also, for the seniors, that when seniors retire, they want peace. They want quiet. They want, don't want boogie-oo-gy all day long, every day. So, if there's going to be security, is it going to be lasting? A lot of time developers come in and promise us everything, and they, they leave. Will our seniors be left alone? Um, also, it is my concern, please, when these buildings, if this is approved, don't come in with a bunch of promises and then leave us hanging. It seems as though we have some good prospects with the people from New Birth, but those are basically my concerns. Um, environmentally, we don't, we know that the deforestation and chopping of trees will impact the wildlife, even though people say it won't. It will, because sometimes the deer come in my yard and go to sleep. So, it, it does affect them. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kell. All right, how much time is left for the applicant? Four minutes?
Three.
So, three minutes, okay. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the application? Come give your name and your address.
Hi, I'm Antonio Sample, uh, part of the development team, uh, civil engineer. Uh, address is forty-nine fifty-one Flowers Road South, Atlanta, Georgia. Uh, did want to address the concerns about buffers and the environment. Um, so, as part of the City of Stonecrest's code, which you all may be aware of, we are required to meet and exceed any of the environmental issues. Uh, we do have erosion control measures in place, uh, that would hold the contractor accountable for dust control, um, noise sensitivity. I think City of Stonecrest has, uh, noise ordinance, um, that prevents construction after a certain time. Um, and then from the environmental, as, uh, was already stated at the beginning of the presentation, there are no wetlands, uh, present on the site. The site was previously, uh, clear-cutted and pad-grade it, so, um, we're not, uh, basically harming any, uh, the environment, uh, beyond what it was previously done. So, did want to address those items.
All right, thank you, sir. All right. Okay, that's the time. Now, at this time, are there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the application? You may come forth and give your name, address, and state your opposition.
My name is Albert Ed- my name is Albert Edwards. I'm at thirty-one sixty-five Evans Mill Road, right in back of this. Okay, first of all, the buffer's not going to work. There's a club, Grand Hands, that's across I-20 from me, and I can hear every syllable they say whenever they do something, every single syllable. As far as the erosion, there's no way that there, the, there's no wetlands directly on the property or where they're going to build, but downhill from it. It's all water and deer run through there and, and all that. Next, uh, the traffic, there's, there's no way that with all of these houses, it's going to, you know, we want to be able to, um... Deal with all the traffic. Is it, that's going to happen, or for one thing. And I don't think, like, the amphitheater or whatever is, like, the, already, I don't, there's no real code enforcement that I know of that's stopping anything before nine to ten o'clock. And so, what I get is three o'clock in the morning, boom, 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 you know, and, and, and on. Also, it's... Them not sticking to what they say they're going to do, and not selling the property off once they get this code, that this, uh, zoning be done. That's my main concern. There'll be, uh, uh, an Amazon, you know, behind there or whatever. But there has to be something keeping them from reneging on what they're going to do. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to the application?
Harper, and I represent thirty-six fifty-seven Evans Mill Road, which is not very far from the planned, um, development. I am not directly in opposition. I do have some questions, and I do feel like there needs to be more time for folks to come up with some answers, um, that we can really rely on. The simple fact that the Phase Two has not been completely outlined, or we haven't had much of, much information on what happens in Phase Two, and also, they've already let us know that they plan on kind of switching out, uh, and letting other people kind of take the lead on that. That gives me great concern. Um, also, I already travel a particular distance on Evans Mill Road. I live on Evans Mill Road, and it's already a lot more traffic than I ever signed up for living in this area. I'm very much concerned about the amount of traffic and trucking that will be brought to the area just simply because of the development. My other concern, um, is the price point. I'm not... I want to know more about, I guess, the efficiency, the energy efficiency, the energy emissions, and the affordability after the build. Um, I understand that we're all looking for, um, subsidies, um, to help, uh, folks be able to afford a particular price point. I'm, um, concerned about the commitment to this price point, um, with all that is being, um, that, that they say that they're going to do. And I'm, I'm most concerned about the commercial aspect of this development in regards to traffic, in regards to us being able to get around, move freely, and, um, and continue the lifestyle that we have at this very moment. So, um, I love the fact that we're looking to build. I love the fact that we want to continue to develop the area. I absolutely think that this is a great idea for seniors. I think my concern is the seniors and new, uh, or young adults that we're, um, targeting. I don't know what that would actually look like in regards to the, the community, um, moving, moving in together. I can't, it's difficult for me to envision seniors wanting young adults and, and, and that whole energy that comes with young adults in, in the same space. Um, but other than that, after, I think after those answers became more concrete for me, uh, I would definitely be supportive of it, but I, I just think that we have too much gray area in regards to some of the answers that we've received. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, how much time is left for opposition? Thirteen minutes? Okay, is there any other opposition people wish to speak? All right, seeing that there are none, uh, the applicant has time for rebuttal. If you would like to answer any of those questions, you have time to do so.
Good evening again, Vanessa Williams.
Good evening.
I'd like to address, I'll allow the engineers to speak the engineer language that I do not speak.
Yes, ma'am.
But I will speak to the issues that were brought up by the sister, Nia Harper. First and foremost, she stated that we would be switching out, that there was a communication here that we were going to do some form of switching out. There's no switching. The developer on this project is New Birth and New Birth CDC. They are the developer. When we're speaking specifically of the switching, when our engineer spoke of that, he was speaking specifically to the fact that we were originally looking at doing multi-family housing. The board, Dr. Bryant, and the leadership brought up the, and our CFO spoke to it earlier, that it was a dream deferred by Dr. Long that we actually be able to do affordable senior housing. So instead of us just making it multi-family, we decided to focus on senior housing as well. So that was the transition that had taken place, that he was alluding to. Also, as it relates to the price point, as many are aware, as it relates to any type of governmental assistance and/or, and I don't want to say assistance, because people look at that as a bad word, but it's not. But when you're doing housing development in New York City, multiple, large metropolitan communities, you see multimillion-dollar facilities that are built off of things like Newmarket tax credits, low-income housing tax credits. These are development tools that we're able to utilize to bring down and mitigate the cost to the end user. These are the same type of tools that we're going to be using now in our neighborhood. What typically usually happens is developers come into our neighborhood, they utilize these programs to build housing that they will deem affordable, but we're usually priced out of those communities, and we're not even the person at the end of the day that own the actual property or community. So the difference here is you have folks that are right here out of Stonecrest that are owners of the property. We will be also the developers of the property, and we're trying to utilize and will be utilizing the same technical assistance that's out there for any other community throughout the Atlanta proper area. And as it relates to the seniors and young folks coming together, we see this demonstrated in Midtown. We see this demonstrated in Buckhead. We see this demonstrated all over the state of Georgia, where you have master-planned communities that are able to embrace all aspects of the life of those that are actually being the end users of the, or purchasers of the home in the community itself. So I hope that that will address some of the sisters' concerns that she mentioned. And as it relates to the price point itself, I do want to say this. The only reason why we're not sticking to and saying the home is going to cost $280,000 is because if we are successful with getting a grant from, let's say, and I'll keep utilizing them, because I'm praising God and hoping that we will, Federal Home Loan Bank says, "We're going to allow you to have our set-aside bank." Or the state of Georgia, who has another buy-down application that we've applied for. It says, "Okay, well, we're going to grant you your buy-down application." That's $20,000 per house that we're able to take off of the cost of the home per unit. So at one, a person who qualifies for that house would then be able to qualify for versus someone who would not. And you would have to qualify in order to be able to get that type of price reduction. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Commissioners, you have any questions for the applicant? Wait a minute.
Again, Adolphus Armstrong, 3649 Donovan Court, Decatur, Georgia. Just to kind of speak to the question about the property in and of itself, obviously, the New Birth is absolutely committed to the project. And we've already had internal discussions about the homeowners association that we're going to set up, and that one of the things that Dr. Bryant and the board is adamantly, again, is making sure, again, that this is for the community. So we're going to make sure that there are going to be stipulations in there. There won't be any Airbnbs, there won't be any flippering or anything along those lines. That's something that our attorney has already started the process of thinking that through as in terms of how do you codify that and making sure that that is something that goes with each and every deed in the property. So I wanted to share that before the engineers come back. Thanks again.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, that's time for the rebuttal. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Walker. Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Could you close the floor for public hearing? And then have a question? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Little voice in the air. Okay. I'd like, I'll entertain a motion that we end public hearing before we go into discussion on that. So is there a motion to close public hearing on item RZ25-009?
Yes, I make a motion to close public hearing on RZ25-00009.
Is there a second?
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned by Commissioner Williams, properly seconded by Commissioner Walker. All in favor vote by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That the record reflect unanimous decision that we close public hearing on this item. We're going to discussion with the commissioners. Commissioner Walker, you had the floor before we did the closing.
To ask the question to the lady?
Okay, to Dr. Nash? Okay, Dr. Nash, if you could come to the podium. Go ahead, Commissioner Walker.
What is to stop? I mean, the project is definitely a great project.
Thank you.
But what's to stop investors from coming in here? I know one gentleman spoke of, you know, pre-sales and that kind of thing, to stop these investors from coming in and buying up that property and doing what they want to do with it. That's one of the questions that I wanted to ask. And the other one is, you hear a lot about seniors, you know, seniors there, seniors there. I'm definitely a senior, but all of us don't necessarily want to, you know, to be qualifying for something or trying to get a grant. And especially in today's age, it's just so hard to get that. But you all seem like you would be on top of that. But there are seniors out here that, you know, we live a different lifestyle, so.
Absolutely, yes, ma'am. So to answer your first question, Commissioner Walker, to mitigate that from happening, Adolphus Armstrong, our CFO, spoke to it briefly. Our current general counsel is writing up currently now the actual codes for the homeowners association itself. In that, there are certain stipulations, as we shared with the citizens that took the tour with us. We are going to say things like, "You cannot have anyone lease this home." That you cannot. These are things that we're literally putting in the bylaws of, and at the actual homeowners association itself. And even when it comes down to the funding, with some of the funding that we'll utilize to actually develop the home itself, the homes itself, some of the funding will have very strict requirements. In order for you to be able to qualify, you will have to have ownership for five years. There are things like, and it has to be single ownership. So we will be putting the actual measures in place to ensure, because that's actually a concern of ours as well. But those concerns will be addressed in the actual codes and regulations through our homeowners association as well.
And then to... You hear a lot about that.
Yes, ma'am. No, you're, and we see the trend. You're absolutely correct, and that's a genuine concern, especially when you're looking at putting homes in a community at this price point. You know, so I, but the, our, absolutely, yes, ma'am. So the end goal of Dr. Bryant and our Board of Directors is to ensure that the community is the recipient, not investors. So we will be going through that process to ensure that those that buy have to sign off and agree to those types of things. And I don't want to act as though I'm the attorney to speak to them, but that's some of the language that we've spoken about already. And as it relates to your second question, as far as diversity in seniors, absolutely. But there are, and just to put you in the mind frame of the church, we have parishioners and people that are in the church that are saying, "We are the client. We're the customer, and this is what we need." So we didn't just say, "Hey, we're going to make a development." We did a development, and we took basically time to meet with the members of New Birth and say, "What is it that you see that's missing in this community?" So this was an all-hands-on-deck type of development, where just like as we brought members of the community to the development, we brought our own members of our church and said, "How do you feel we can impact this community best?" And for those that were seniors, those that were young, a lot of them spoke on the fact that they'd love to see a very harmonious community where both young and old can reside together. And that's where we came up with the concept of New Birth Village.
I guess, because I'm very familiar with New Birth and what you all do for the community.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Williams.
So I would like to piggyback off of the investor thing, because I live in a townhome community, and the bylaws are what they are, right? The bylaws are typically for every community that chooses to be an HOA. I want to know specifically, how are you guys going to control investors not buying up the property? You just mentioned just a touch, and then you shifted into the funding. But it's kind of difficult. I've been HOA president before. It's difficult to monitor that, because the HOA is not involved in the purchasing process. The HOA is not involved in the qualifying process. The HOA is not involved in that. So how do you all plan on controlling that? People will come in, and they live in California. They will buy here. And the next thing you know, the property is being rented out. So you all are planning to have a very strong HOA? Is that what I'm hearing?
Not only a strong HOA, but a strong presence. I think the quality that makes this project different from any other project that's here is that this is a project that is truly owned, operated, and developed by members of this community and leaders in this community. I believe it was Mrs. Cofield that said earlier, "We cannot pick this church up and carry it somewhere else." Dr. Bryant plans on being here. The board members are vested and they're here. Our CFO lives in the community. We are people who are committed. And so to answer your question, because you're absolutely correct. I did touch it and then kind of, yes, ma'am, I did. But to answer your question, just as though you had outlined, we will be a part of all of those processes. So it's not as though we're having an outside agency come in and manage that process for us. We will be a part of that process. So therefore, we will be able to help pick the best suited persons to come in that are also willing to adhere to the community that we're wanting to build and ensure that they're able to sign off, not, let me say this, we're not segregating or anything like that, but we will be a part of the process in saying, "This is the outline of what you have to sign off on." And the reason why I kind of touched it and didn't want to go into any depth of the conversation is because, as, you know, the sister and the brother said earlier, we have a lot of folks who come here, and they make a lot of promises. The one thing we don't want to do is stand up here and make a bunch of promises and not be able to keep the words that are coming out of our mouth. We want every word that comes out of our mouth to come back positive and affirmed, not void. So I don't want to speak to something that I'm unable to with clarity and confidence. So what I can tell you is, I can give you full faith and confidence that we're committed to ensuring that as many people as we're able to get into these homes, they are people who have the spirit and the desire and the tenacity of wanting to be new homeowners or re-homeowners, and they want to adhere to the bylaws as we've written them. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners with questions?
Do, I have another question.
Commissioner Williams.
Thank you so much, Chair. Let me say this first. I'm concerned about the housing in the green. Can you go back to the site plan, please? And maybe one of the engineers can answer this question. Keep going, keep going, keep going. Yes, yes. So in Phase One, the green is Phase One, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Where is the parking? I know you've mentioned something about, some of the homes will have garages.
May I go back to?
Absolutely.
Designs?
Yes.
All of our homes, this is the Accra.
Okay.
The Accra is part of the Phase One. It's a 1,200-square-foot home, three stories, two-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath, two-car park. So this, all of our homes actually have parking on-site.
So let me go a different way, because our townhomes have the same thing.
Okay.
And when they have guests, they are taking up the entire street.
And guess what? This is when I go like this.
Yes. So, again, Tyrone Williams, yeah, we don't provide 300 spare parking spaces, but there are about 85 or so off-street parking spaces spread out through the community. One of the concerns that had come up, and we actually kind of tested it, if there was an event at the community pavilion, then of course, you know, we have parking that's like a seven-minute walk over at New Birth. So it's not like people are going to be parking all throughout the street. There'll be controlled parking. We'll have access that you can actually walk through the woods, and it's really only like about a seven-minute walk. I mean, if you're going to Lenox Square or Stoner, you might walk further, you know, to, from your parking space to the store you're going to. So that should accommodate a lot of the situations. On the holiday weekends, you know, if everybody's got barbecue going, you just got to deal with it. I'm just going to be honest with you, okay? But I don't see that as an ongoing persistent problem.
And how many homes are in Phase One again? I'm sorry.
101.
And that consists of the small, the tiny homes and townhomes, correct?
No, that Phase One is just single-family.
Single-family, gotcha.
Urban, single-family units.
On the site plan, that looks tight.
Well, I would say to you, the, well, I think some of the people spoke that went down and looked at the community that was in Union Park, which was much tighter than it's maybe.
Oh, wow.
And it was comfortable. They had 22, was it 22, 26 units on 1.6 acres? And it was very comfortably spaced, you know. Someone talked about efficiency of utilities. Well, typically, on the designs that we're using, your utility cost is going to probably run about $50, maybe $80 a month, because you're looking at a R40 wall, looking at a R45, 47 on the roof. You're double-pane, triple-plane windows. So you have a very strong environmental envelope in terms of, if it's hot outside, you're going to feel cool on the inside. You're not going to spend a level of energy to cool the house, okay? And if it's cold on the outside, you're not going to spend, it's going to be warm on the inside. You're not going to spend the level of energy that you normally are accustomed to, to heat the house and keep it warm. So you're basically living inside a cooler.
One more question. I do apologize, I have a lot of questions. I typically don't, but I'm very concerned when it comes to townhomes, because, you know, we've just not had good, we've just not had good outcomes here. Nevertheless, I want to address the buffers, the noise control. I really don't know how you plan on controlling noise. I don't think that you can control noise, that people don't hear it, and the dust. Like, what are you guys going to put up to keep the dust control? What does that look like?
Okay, during construction...
Is that a realistic question?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm going to provide you the engineering answer and the real-world answer.
Okay.
The engineering answer is that we have control measures that we say that when you're going in and out of the site, you have to go across a rock entry and exit point. You have to wash the wheels off when you're on the rock point, so that you wash off all the dirt. You're not dragging dirt and mud out into the roadway. Dust is typically a problem. Fortunately, once we establish the grading, you put, you know, a straw or you put grass cover on it. So, you know, you may have to deal with that in the real world for a couple of months. But it's not like it's going to be like that for the next 50 years. You know, trees and grass and everything tends to come back. We're going to do what we need to do to promote that. The noise issue is another story. So what I would say to you, we say a community pavilion, but it's not like we're going to be doing an event at the community pavilion 52 weeks out of the year. And those events are not necessarily always going to be music. It could be just a festival, art show. It doesn't always mean that somebody's going to be playing loud music. Again, someone talked about the concept of being able to hear people talking loud. Those people talking loud were not at an event. Those are people in houses. So, you know, I hear what he's saying, I got what he's saying. But, you know, in the real world, these are just some of the things. But no, I do not envision that there will be activities at the community pavilion where you're going to have hard rock or acid rock being played, and it's going to be going on until 3:00. We can design that, okay, we need to observe a noise ordinance at 10:30, 11:00, or whatever works for the community. That'll all be worked out and figured it out.
I think the noise ordinance is 11:00, 11:00 at night.
We'll hear to that.
To the gentleman's defense, I live in back of a park, and sometimes the music is so loud, our homes are shaking. And so I understand the concern. Will you all put in place a, I'm not sure how to say this, like, the music, instead of the music being on 15 or 20, like it's on a 10? Because the area is so small?
I would say that, yes, that could be written into the HOA, and it can be enforced.
Thank you.
I mean, you have to call, okay? But, I mean, you know, I pulled up to a stoplight today, and the young lady in the car was playing the music loud enough that I was like, that's a woman? You know, so we'll work with that, okay?
We appreciate that, because seriously, during the summertime, like, they have concerts all the time. And it was, you know, tolerable at first. And it was, you know, tolerable at first, but now it's getting out of control to where the houses are beginning to shake, and the entire community is complaining. So I want to just recognize that that gentleman did have a legitimate complaint. And I will, thank you for addressing it in a little bit more detail. Thank you.
I'll add one other thing too. From, that's why the community pavilion is toward the center of the site. So it's about seven, say, let's say 500 feet from the residential property line that's going to the east. So there will be a distance. It's not like that community pavilion is right up against them. Okay, so you have the buffer of having to move through tree screens, the residential homes, and then another tree screen at the buffer line. So we think it'll, it'll buffer it to a degree, okay?
All right, commissioners, any other questions? Commissioners? Okay, the floor is open for discussion. Any discussion on the item? Okay, I'd like to make some, say some things for the record. First, New Birth Missionary Baptist Church has been a great public partner, public private partner for DeKalb County over the years, also for the city of Stonecrest since the city's inception. Dealing with many developers and many churches and temples and mosques over a 28-year span in government and living in DeKalb County for 33 years, I can say that we see, the proof is in the pudding. We see the partners that we are getting with New Birth. We see the concerns of all the residents. You see the advocates that have been here that I've seen back in Arabia Mountain heyday with Dave Marcus or DeKalb County with Leanne Levitan and Fay Colfield doing things to build up the county. A lot of times what people don't see is when they come into an area, how you make the sausage. They see the product. And when they hear about, hey, you got to make sausage, you got to do what? You got to kill the hog to make sausage? They don't get it. You have to make sure that you have a strong public partner along working with the government. Because we're living in trying times. I'm also a professor. You want to reference the 30s, look at where we are now as a country. And you go back into the 1930s, 31, 33, you see that what goes around comes around, you know? History always repeats itself. But one thing that I can say, and this is Eric Hubbard speaking, not as commissioner, but your faith does things. If you're a believer of the Bible, the Quran, the Torah, you know it's your faith and the diligence of what we do to work and make things happen. Our community has to be built. When I grew up in the 70s, we had dry cleaners, lawyer's office. We had a police station on our corner, dry cleaners, the grocery store. And then things moved away and the community complained like, hey, we don't have this in our community. Affordable housing. A lot of times you see when Commissioner Walker, and I think Commissioner Williams mentioned about the investors. Well, in 2007, the real estate market flopped. And you saw a lot of investors coming into neighborhoods saying, hey, I know you bought that house for 115,000, I give you 300,000. And some people don't know about finance, wealth, and how to store up. They're like, yeah, I take it, I take it. So everybody's taking all the money. And then those people, they blow through the money in eight months, and you still got to have a place to live. And there was no affordable housing. So then you see, it's almost like a sharecropper system, because the investor or these corporations are owning homes in your neighborhood. And you're paying two times as much for rent, whereas you were paying a thousand dollars for your mortgage. So we have to look at our community. If we're going to build our community, what we have to do, how we have to work together. And when you have a solid partner, someone who's been proven 10 times out of 10 to invest in the community, to invest in the welfare, to invest in the population that surrounds and build that community, that's what we need. And in Stonecrest, we got to have businesses in those industrial parks because I don't want to see my taxes constantly going up because you want to tax the rooftops. So with that being said, because you all are a smart bunch, and I appreciate everybody's opinion, you can agree to disagree. That's the beauty about America. And that's the beauty in Stonecrest and DeKalb County, what we are here to. Because this is a democracy and a republic. We know that, I know Commissioner Williams is saying, but what about, will it bring restaurants and businesses?
I think it's restaurants on the property? Okay.
It is. Yes, ma'am, mixed use. And then it'll be here closer too. You don't have to keep going to Buckhead, Commissioner Williams, spending that money. I think that tax dollars here. So with that being said, I know everyone's looking like, Mr. Hubbard, you said what? I said that I would like to make a motion that we recommend for approval. RZ25-009 to the city council. As the application has been given and approval based off the recommendations of staff. And may I get a second to the motion? Thank you. I have a second by Commissioner Walker. All in favor, vote by saying aye. Aye. Let the record reflect, it's unanimous by the planning commission that we recommend approval of this application to the city council. Thank you, commissioners. And congratulations.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I believe there are conditions, and if the planning staff can correct me if I'm wrong.
Okay, you believe there were some conditions? Yeah, it's on the recommendation of the staff. And I said, based off the recommendation of the staff. So they do understand the conditions as the staff has put on that, correct? Thank you. So they do understand that.
Okay, we typically would have them just have you all vote on approval with conditions. But if that is understood, then the final vote with the conditions will be in the city council meeting.
Yes, thank you, counselor, because I did say as recommended by staff. So it is understood. Thank you. All right, with that being said, planning department, are there any more cases for this evening?
About this evening, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Director. Well, since this is the point when we're getting ready to adjourn, I do have a few announcements that are very, very important to Stonecrest, DeKalb County, and to America. First, last week, we buried Judge Ronald Ramsey, who was a Stonecrest resident, Stonecrest citizen. He served as a state senator. He was also one of the senators that took the articles down to the general assembly to propose that Stonecrest be on the ballot. So we want to remember him and his family, his wife Doris, his daughter Christian, granddaughter Mariah, and his son Ronald Junior. Our prayers are with you. And to the Ramsey family, thank you for your sacrifice and the service of State Senator Ron Ramsey. Second thing, which is important, early voting starts October 14th for municipality Stonecrest. Stonecrest has three candidates on the ballot, well, three offices. District, District 5, District 3, and District 1. So I want you to all remember that. Early voting starts October 14th. The election day is November the 4th. Also tomorrow at 6:00 PM at the Stonecrest Library on Klondike. There is a forum for candidates at 6:00 PM. The candidates will be there. They will tell you, hey, I live in Stonecrest. I want to move Stonecrest forward. I want to keep Stonecrest backwards. I want to unincorporate Stonecrest. They're going to let you know their, their vision and their views. So please, as citizens and voters, go out and listen to those candidates and make your decision. And they always say, we get the representation we deserve. So if you vote and your candidate wins, that's the representation we deserve, the majority in Stonecrest, whoever we get in those positions. But we do want to build Stonecrest. Stonecrest has been around since 2017, and there's some things we want to see and some things we don't want to see. But exercise your right, your voice, your vote, and make things happen. Also, on the ballot would be for Public Service Commissioner. The lady was talking about utilities earlier. Well, the Public Service Commissioners decide what the utility wattage and rate will be throughout the state. This is a multi-board, I think it's nine, no, it's maybe seven members on the board. You have two that are going up for election. And those two districts touch on Stonecrest. Stonecrest most definitely is in, I think, District 3. And I know there's a young man who's in a position now who was appointed by the governor a few years ago. And then there's a young man who's running, his name just happens to be Peter Hubbard, but it's not me, but I just want, he's running. So I'm just letting you know, for Stonecrest, you have those people that are running. And finally, I would, ma'am. I didn't get to one other thing. Oh, okay. And I want to say, one, one other thing that we wanted to make note of for you all living in Stonecrest is that you're going to get a surveys to be coming out from the, from the governor's office from the state. When you get those surveys, please answer. Part of the things you're going to see is GDOT. They're making improvements on the highways around in Stonecrest that you see I-20, 285. You see they're building bus rapid transit lanes on I-20, which are going to run through Stonecrest. Stonecrest has a hub that MARTA had received federal funding for a few years ago. That they're building a hub. You're not going to see heavy rail coming to Stonecrest right now, but you are going to see a bus rapid transit. And there's a possibility for light rail. So MARTA, under the new direction of the interim GM Hunt, Jonathan Hunt, is going to be having meetings in Stonecrest. You're probably going to see them at the mall. Please go to those meetings with MARTA, and please go to the meetings with GDOT. When you go to those meetings, you can let your voices be heard. You can see the improvements that are coming to the area, and you can also make suggestions. I know they are having more bus rapid buses on the streets. And they are cutting out some of the routes they presently have. So you're going to see a different blend. You're going to see some MARTA police officers working in conjunction with DeKalb County, because you see on those bus shelters. Unfortunately, sometimes you may see them, the glasses are broken, bust out. People are destroying the property. And that's not good for the city of Stonecrest or the DeKalb County. Because some of us have mothers and wives and daughters and grandparents that rely on the bus. And when you destroy the property, you're only hurting our community. So we don't want to see that. So you're going to see more MARTA patrols out there with the DeKalb County on the streets. Because we want to make sure that those shelters are in place for the citizens. Because your tax dollars are paying for that, and we want you to have the most and the best for your money. And with that being said, I'll open the floor for a motion for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. That concludes our meeting. Be safe tonight, and get out to vote, and happy holiday seasons to you everyone.